Good evening, Dr. Board Member. Let me take it around campus order. Good evening, my name is George Prazers. I'm a superintendent of the board.
I'm Sarah Betts, Vice President of Southfield Schools. I'm the head of the department, Secretary of the Department of Education.
Michael Poole, Resident.
Eddie Robinson, Superintendent.
And then you're Mr. David Prazers.
Randy Robinson.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Good evening, Wanda Cook, Associate Superintendent for Instruction.
Good evening, David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources.
And keeping track of everything, keeping everybody on point tonight is Nicole, Chris, and kind of, you know, drive things around here. On the video for tonight is Mr. Chuck Capsis, who's in the back, and doing our honor is Ms. Precious Williams. Thank you, Precious. All right. If I could get Ms. Smith to please lead us in the, uh, first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to do a white TV reporter by student representative, and tonight we're going to start with Mr. Earl Vines from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Yeah. Mr. Vines.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent Dr. Cook Robinson, Central Office Staff and Administrators, Southfield Public Schools staff and parents and students and guests. My name is Earl Vines and I'm your Student Board Representative member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Over the past few weeks, Southfield Regional Academic Campus have had the following activities. On November 12th, we had an honor roll ice cream, also for forty-nine students on the honor roll, who were recognized for academic awards. And we did, on November 9th, ESRA held their first leadership conference for thirty-five students. Administration and Congress led warm-up and icebreaker activities centered on building teams, value, and leaving a legacy. On November 9th, Ms. Linda Smith and Mr. Jason Solomon, along with five students from ESRA, attended the two thousand twelve regional conference of the National Society of Black Engineers located in Chicago. On October 10th, ESRA held their twelfth annual options and opportunities college fair. Thirty colleges and armed forces came to speak with students to prepare them for their future, over a hundred families present. The second, this is the second consecutive year that Ms. Lambert and Ms. Stewart sponsor the person club that meets every Friday during lunch. Project Womenhood, which is sponsored by Ms. Stewart, is beginning their partnership with Creveston Elementary this Friday, November sixteenth. Martha Young has been chosen as the first place contestant from ESRA in the Dream at Fifty art contest, which is a representation of Dr. Martin Luther King doing the "I Have a Dream" speech for the fiftieth anniversary. The original "I Have a Dream" speech was given in Detroit on June twenty-third of nineteen sixty-three. The "I Have a Dream" speech was later given on August twenty-eighth in nineteen sixty-three in Washington, D.C. I am proud to say that I am part of the ninety percent of our seniors who have applied and been accepted to college. During the week of October twenty-ninth, students applied to one or more colleges. On October thirtieth, Ms. Powell took a group of students to the Michigan Alternative Education Organization Stars Leadership Conference in Latimer. The conference chose prepared students for the upcoming spring conference with different activities. Today, our Women of Tomorrow met with the mentors of Clear Channel and Conte Mar. As you can see, it's beginning to be a busy year at ESRA.
Well, first, we want to congratulate you for being accepted to college. That's a big step. You did a table of colleges you were accepted to.
Um, well, they had us apply to, like, local community colleges such as OTC or Wayne Community College and just other community colleges that are within the area.
Okay. And you were accepted where?
OTC.
Congratulations. Okay, next we have Ms. Kiara Terrence from Southfield High School.
Hi. So, just a month review at Southfield High, our student congress, an organization that I'm Vice President of, hosted our annual fall blood drive this past Friday, November ninth, and we were able to collect thirty-six pints of blood, which will definitely help considering the shortage of blood due to Hurricane Sandy. Those thirty-six pints of blood can save up to three lives each, so totaling up to a hundred and eight lives, and we had students, staff, and community members participate. If you didn't know, our football team did make it to the district championship. We unfortunately lost on Friday, November second against Oak Park High School in overtime. The score was nineteen to twelve. Our Scholars Plus program, which is a program for highly motivated students who participate in AP classes, that allows them to just, allows them the opportunity to get a distinguished scholar diploma. We had an induction ceremony on Thursday, November eighth, where we inducted over ten new members. And if you've been watching the SPS channel, you've noticed our band has won numerous awards, one being the grand championship at Kentucky, yeah, at Kentucky State Homecoming Parade for outstanding performance, and numerous band members also were offered scholarships from that university. The Southfield Day newspaper staff had the pleasure of attending the Michigan Daily High School Journalism Conference downtown. They were able to meet Stephen Henderson, who was the editor of the editorial page of the Detroit Free Press, and they were also able to interact with other high school journalism staff from around Michigan. I tried to bring some papers from the first issue, but they sold out, and so look forward to seeing the next issue, which will be out around the time when we get off from Thanksgiving break. So, the NHS, which is the National Honor Society, they are planning on hosting a practice ACP for juniors before they take it in March, just so they are introduced to it, because a lot of us weren't introduced to it before we took it in March, and so that's just to help them see where they are before they take it. And, oh, the two thousand thirteen Class War is going to participate in the tree lighting ceremony downtown at Campus Marches, and we are also planning to do a Toys for Kids Drive in December. And lastly, basketball season is going to start soon. You can come out and support the boys varsity basketball team for the first game of the season as they take on Ferndale High School, December fourth at four-thirty in the Southfield High Stadium. Thanks.
Thank you. This is Blair Moore from Southfield Lakeville High School.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everybody.
I just wanted to do a recap from our month of October at Southfield Lakeville. On October tenth, we had our greenhouse reading ceremony, and I, President of Southfield Lakeville, would like to thank the board for coming out and showing their support. And there will be more information on our renovated greenhouse as we get further into the meeting. On October seventeenth, the meat test for the ninth graders, it was administered that week, and the PSAT for the school was also distributed. October nineteenth, Lakers had their homecoming game at four-thirty, and following that, October twentieth, was our homecoming dance. And October twenty-fifth, we had our parent teacher conference from three PM to five-thirty, and then another session from six-thirty to eight. And October twenty-sixth, NHS, the National Honor Society, had their Halloween Boo-Ra, which they had a mini daycare for the youngsters, providing entertainment so the parents could get the night off. On November fifth, our band and orchestra had a fall concert at seven PM in the auditorium. November seventh, the Ivy International Laboratory and Scholars Plus had their induction ceremony, where they inducted forty-one new members. And on November eighth, the vocal concert, there was a vocal concert at seven PM in the auditorium. Following that, November nineteenth, there will be a TCSA meeting from seven PM to eight-thirty. And November twenty-seventh, NHS will have their induction ceremony from seven PM to eight-thirty in the auditorium. And also, the Charger Pride newsletter is starting up, which will provide an additional source of information for Charger news and updates, as well as this past week, the boys and girls' basketball tryouts took place. Thank you.
And next, Ms. Ashley Parker from University High School, Kansas.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So, for the month of November, at November twenty-sixth, UHSA's intramurals will begin, and this is our basketball season, and in, um, our, in next spring, volleyball and kickball will begin. So, um, Friday, November sixteenth, UHSA will be having their first and hopefully annual taste fest from six to nine PM at UHSA. We'll, UHSA is hosting their sec, our second annual prom fashion show at our school from six to seven-thirty. Um, November twentieth is our AP Promotion Day, or our AP Fair, where all of our students to school will be wearing their AP shirts that was provided by our Dean, Ms. Williams. And also, um, at the fair, UHSA will be promoting their, um, goal of having at least every student entered in at least one AP course. Also, um, teachers will be present at this fair, where they would just, you know, be promoting AP and trying to get all of our students involved. So, Monday, November nineteenth, um, UHSA will be sending six students to the Diversity Symposium at the open schools. We are one of ten schools participating in this Diversity Symposium. So, end of, in the month of December, NHS will be hosting their Random Acts of Kindness Week for both the students and the teachers, and also, Friday, November sixteenth, is our UHSA application deadline, and also, our test is the, is December eighth. Um, seventy percent of our sophomores, ninety-three percent of our juniors, and ninety-two percent of our seniors are all enrolled in a college-level course. And lastly, December tenth, Sierra Del Persen, a twenty-twelve senior, um, and also an ambassador of the Gates Millennium Scholarship, she is hosting a seminar at our school for those students interested in applying to the scholarship. Thank you.
Well, now we come to the student staff recognition, and first, we have Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, recently honored as the Regional Superintendent of the Year by the Michigan Association of School Administrators. Officials from that organization are here today with a special presentation.
I just want you to know, it's not often that I get to present the Regional Superintendent of the Year award. But I happen to be in the area, and I thought I would stop. But, in all seriousness, I'm here for a much more important reason, because I'm here to honor the Michigan Association of School Administrators, Michigan Superintendent of the Year. Let me tell you, you have a wonderful staff. And, not that I threatened them, but that I asked them if there was some way that we could keep this a secret. We had a committee of about ten individuals representing all walks of educational life, who review over, we had a ten, actually, ten candidates for Superintendent of the Year. And by consensus, after six hours of reviewing all of the documentation and all of the data overwhelmingly, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is our Michigan Superintendent of the Year. Truly one of the most fun nights I have in the course of the year is honoring the State Superintendent of the Year. And as I said, it's not easy to get to this position. You're nominated, your community sends letters, individuals like Dr. Vicky Markovich sent supportive documentation, and basically, as she said, she recognizes the importance of student achievement, and more importantly, she can have others see the vision, because she demonstrates it, she exemplifies it in everything she does. It is about changing the culture. It is about saying, "Students and student achievement are the most important thing a school district is about." No offense, school boards, you're not the most important thing. No offense, Dr. Robinson, you're not the most important thing. It's student achievement and students doing great things. Oh, it takes tremendous leadership to demonstrate and to help change the culture so student learning and student achievement become the number one thing that this district is about, and you truly have done that. And being Superintendent, you're a leader not only of the district, you're a leader in the community. And as we got letters from the mayor and from council people and, and a variety of individuals saying, "She truly is a change maker in our community. She truly has made a difference." You honor us by being Superintendent of the Year. The process from here on out, I have to tell you, we have presented her credentials and all the documentation to AASA, the American Association of School Administrators, and she will be competing with fifty or forty-nine, I should say, other superintendents. Actually, there's one other. We throw Canada in too. We, our neighbors to the north, they, they have a, a person that is also competing. And, but the bottom line is this, Michigan has a very strong chance of having the National Superintendent of the Year with Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. I did prompt, your assistants told me I couldn't take the whole evening, I had to be fairly quick, but I am honored to present you with this plaque. Now, this is just a certificate, you'll actually get a plaque at our Fall, or Midwinter Conference in February, and you will have an opportunity to talk to some of your friends and all of the superintendents who are just so honored by your great commitment to education, not only in this wonderful community, but in the state at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, as you can see, you've got a lot of, a lot of friends that came up tonight, and they even want to have something to say as well, so first, my president, James Jackson.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. It is truly a pleasure to be here this evening. I have, I actually come wearing three hats this evening, so if you'll bear with me just for a few minutes. On behalf of my boss, Congressman Sanders Levin, I want to bring you congratulations for this well-earned and well-deserved award. Uh, on behalf of former board member and now state representative, Rudy Hobs, I present you with a special tribute. Uh, Rudy couldn't be here this evening, uh, he is doing the work of the state, uh, and traveling abroad, uh, but he did not want this night to pass without leaving you with a special tribute, uh, and I, I won't read the entire tribute, uh, but I will say that, the conclusion of it says, "In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to salute Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson upon her selection as MASA's State Superintendent of the Year. Her ability to meet challenges and evolve along with a challenging world requires much skill and vision. For this, along with her distinguished leadership, dedication, and innovation, the state of Michigan and all those benefiting in her district will be forever grateful. We wish her much happiness and continued success with all future endeavors." And that's signed, State Representative of Thirty-Fifth District, Rudy Hobs. And finally, I'd like to say, as a former board member, former school board president, that, uh, who was actually on the board when we interviewed and hired Wanda to be our superintendent, uh, that, when we went through that interview process, we were very clear that we were looking for someone with vision and with passion, a vision for where this district needs to go, and a passion, a vigorous passion for getting this district there, and I have never regretted, not one moment, the fact that we chose you for this position. Uh, you have never disappointed us, you have moved this district, uh, from, from the point in which it was when you got here to the point it is now, which is light years beyond what we had hoped for. You know, as the father of three daughters, two of which attend Southfield Schools, uh, you know, just the fact that we had University High, you know, alone, that was your vision, and you brought that to fruition, you know, and with your leadership combined with the talents of, of all the teachers and administrators in this district, you have truly turned an important curve, uh, an important corner in the path and the course of this district, and that could not happen without your leadership. I have a third daughter who's back here chewing on a cookie, uh, who next year will be a student in Southfield Schools. And I can tell you, without any hesitation, that as a father of three daughters in Southfield Schools, and, and I say this as a product of Southfield Schools, that I would not trust my children with any other superintendent but Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Thank you.
From the city of Southfield, we have, uh, Mr. Myron Prazers, the Councilman.
Good evening. I don't have anything to present to you tonight except my undying gratitude for the work that you're doing with this school district. Now, when people move into a city, they, if they have children, they first look at the school system, because they want their, their children to go to an excellent school, and that's why we moved to Southfield. We have two daughters that graduated from Southfield High. My son relocated, or located here in Southfield. He has two sons, our two grandsons graduated from Southfield Laker, and they're both in University of Michigan, and that's, that tells you the kind of, of education that they receive. The city of Southfield will be doing something soon to recognize your accomplishments, but I wanted to be here tonight because you, of all people in the city of Southfield, are one of my favorite people. And I had an opportunity to come here this evening, and I snatched it up so that I could be here to, in person, say, "Thank you so much for what you've done, and what you're about to do for all the students here in the city of Southfield." But we will do a more formal presentation with the city, but congratulations, and I'm glad that I know who you are.
From the Oakland Intermediate School District, we have, um, the Superintendent, Dr. Vicky Markovich.
Hi, Wanda. So, you're going to hear all, all the wonderful things about Wanda, but what you might not know is I came to Oakland County as the Superintendent in June of two thousand four, and Wanda left me before October two thousand four finished. Am I about right on that timeline? She was the first administrator who ever quit on me. So, uh, but the story goes like this. Wanda said to me one day, "Vicky, I, I really, and at a crossroads, I'm not sure where to take my career," and I said, "Wanda, where's your heart?" And she said, "My heart is in leading a district, in having student achievements get to the highest level it can possibly be. My heart is taking a school district into a realm of excellence it has never known." And I said, "Well, then, Wanda, you can't work for us anymore. You've got to go out there and take that K-12 district." I mean, my job is to support Wanda and to support all of you and your efforts, but we don't get to hold the reins, and Wanda really wanted to hold the reins. And I think her holding the reins here at Southfield, as you have heard, has done a marvelous thing for all of your students, your parents, your students to come. I am proud and honored to have had Wanda work for me, even if it was less than six months.
I see a couple of my former colleagues this morning. And would you like to step to the microphone? Hey, I'm going to call you out.
I was not prepared. Like James, I was here when we hired you. You rose to the top of our interview process, and it was a pleasure to work with you for the six years that I was on the board with you, and I'm just so pleased to see all the things that you have continued to do in spite of all of the challenges that, that you have faced financially, and, um, you know, just am very proud of you and the board and the district, and congratulations, and we'll be rooting for you in the National Superintendent of the Year.
Thank you.
And also, Ms. Margaret Hall, former colleague of yours.
Hi, Wanda. I couldn't say nothing yesterday. Hi, all board members. I miss you guys. I think about you every Tuesday. But, Wanda, seriously, I was with the rest of, uh, my colleagues when you came here, and there was never a moment's worry, a never, a moment's hesitation to follow your lead. Um, when you were hired here, you came in some turbulent times, and as you can see, we have smoothly landed with no casualties. So, I take my hat off to you, and I do hope that you do win the national, because you do deserve it. You do the work of all the other forty-nine superintendents in the United States. I love you. Thank you.
I would like to give special recognition to, uh, uh, Mr. James Robinson, Wanda's, um, husband, uh, my friend, and frat brother. Fortunately, James and I, uh, we've known each other since we were eight years old. Uh, we were in third grade together back in St. Agnes, way back then, and, uh, it's a good thing that we have that kind of relationship, because there are days that, you know, I wake up and the first person I speak to in the morning, before I talk to my own wife, is I'm talking to his wife. Fortunately, we have the kind of relationship that, you know, he understands, but, uh, James, we thank you for, uh, uh, giving us, um, such a wonderful Superintendent. I know the support that you give helps to make her the person that she is, so we thank you and recognize you for that as well. I want to give some autograph yourself.
I, I am truly overwhelmed, and I see my administrator, I should have known something when all that administrative was trickering me, and they know I have never lost words but I am today. I want to thank the state for honoring me, I want to thank Vicky, who was my mentor, and she kicked me out. I wanted to stay with her, but she said, "No, it's time for you to leave home." So, I, but she has continued to mentor me, but I would not be receiving this award today if it were not for the hard work of the teachers in this district, the administrators, the cabinet, and my board. They give a hundred and twenty-five to say every day, and they make me look good. So, I want to say thank you to all of you, and I will accept this award for all of us, because it takes a village, and they're my village. They are my backup, so thank you, and thanks all of you. So, thank you, and thanks all of you.
I guess I can give you the agenda, Doctor. We had on the...
Yeah, try again.
Well, do we need the board members? At this time, you want to reserve a little board. The board members? All right. If this round is over to the superintendent or the reporter, this is... Oh, yes, absolutely. We're going to talk to them. I understand, and thank you.
I've won another award.
Yes, you have.
Oh, hey, not enough. No, no, no.
We appreciate it so much. And I love this bow tie. I didn't realize that when I put my bow tie on, it felt like it was going to be a good thing.
I am truly, they can't keep, I didn't believe my people could hold water. They truly keep a secret. None of them told me at all. It was business as usual today, so I am very overwhelmed. We have several reports today, and several reports today from our schools. We're going to see some fantastic things that are happening in our building. But before we do, I want to give a special shout out to Molly McNeese. She is the art teacher at SRAK, and if you will look on the wall here, these are her students' work. They have entered into the art contest, "The I Have a Dream." So before you leave this evening, please take a look at the beautiful artwork that's here. At this time, I'm going to invite Mrs. Frezak and the Southfield Laterm team up to the podium. They are going to share with us information about their new greenhouse and the charge of garden.
Well, good evening, and congratulations, Dr. Cook-Robinson. My name is Annan Usavich. Annan Usavich, I'm a science teacher at Southfield Laterm. I'm also the green coordinator, and I run the green team. I brought two students with me tonight.
Hi, my name is Dara Lawrence.
My name is Amani Dawson.
Hi, my name is Uleksis Gres. And I have an overblown of slides, but I'm going to help you keep it in my five-minute time period. I respect other people's time like I hope they do mine. So, background, here's... In last spring, 2012, my biology students planned and planted a vegetable garden right outside our viewing area, and there was also help from the green team. Some initial goals, one, we're to get kids outside and active. I'm a member of the No Child Left Inside Coalition. I have actually some information for you about that. There's lots of evidence that getting kids outside is good for their health and for their learning. It's also a way for them to see where their food comes from because being in an urban district, we have students that really don't see that connection. Community and service were both a part of this project and also improving the aesthetics of the school grounds. I can go over some of the details, but basically, it makes sense to have a school garden for health reasons, and there are a ton of teachable moments. I used it with biology, I used it with chemistry, and we even had one of the special ed classes on a regular basis coming out, and even, of course, the environmental science class as well. This is the garden site originally. It's a little dark, right in the, we have a flower garden as well, but that's pretty much what it looked like. The timeline, spring, we prepared the ground, the students planned and chose the plants by consensus. We researched what we'd need, what the conditions were, what would grow, what would be harvested at the right time. We were awarded $500 grant from Michigan State University Extension in the summer. Michelle Goldkaller, one of our staff, and Uleksis Sims, took care of the garden. And in the fall, we harvested, we had learning classes out there, we sold eight and donated the produce. So, this is us getting into garden mode. Some of those plants are edible, but they're not the kinds we grow in your garden, probably. So we have lots of learning moments, including habitat, because we found some duck eggs, done lots of spiders, and amazing how every single kid participated. This is what it looked like after we cleared the area. And we're measuring so we know how many plants, how much to baste them, putting down newspaper to prevent weeds from growing back, putting compost, that black pile is actually compost that was donated by Sacra, and researching plants, putting down some more compost, making three piles, planting. And there's a mine right there. And this is what the garden looked like when we left in June. So little tiny plants, there's corns, there's wheat, there's sunflowers, tomatoes, and there's Uleksis watering. This is what it looked like in the middle of summer. And from the other end, you can see the sunflowers, which ended up being, oh, the tallest one was over 15 feet. We planted the big ones because they're exciting to grow. You can see some of our artwork, actually, we have some artwork in the building, so there's ties in with other curriculum. We have an herb garden because we wanted Shakespeare garden too, so there's some of our stage. And this is what the kids came back to when we came back in September. So having left with just little saplings, only Uleksis knew what happened over the summer. Everybody else had the awe moment. Those zinnias, we sold for $5 is okay and worth every penny. Some of the crops we had, tomatoes, cucumbers, different kinds of peppers, corn, which was actually successful, watermelon, other kinds of melons. We tried to grow pumpkins, but when they grew up, they were honeydews. So, we didn't get pumpkins this year, but we're probably going to with properly labeled plants next year, and various things. Some of our, the wheat ended up getting a little bit of a fungus, but we tried, and we'll see next year what worked. We had over 100 pounds of potatoes, tomatoes, and over 100 pounds of cucumbers. In fact, we had beautiful corn, very, very sweet watermelon. The honeydews, the surprise honeydew actually tasted pretty good. Here are some approximate poundages. We measured because of the plant, we need to keep track of things, but over 100 pounds of our top two producers and almost 50 pounds of watermelon. And this doesn't include everything that we ate on the way in, or some of the things that we picked on the way out. But grand total, 322 pounds of produce and at least 210 separate students, so nobody got double counted in that number. And that includes CI students, green team students, volunteers that worked, and students that just used the garden for a lesson. That's the ones that were counted, there might be more. Just some harvesting pictures. This is one of our pre-frost harvests, and there's Michelle and I, and there's Uleksis and I. We weighed most of the things, and some of the students actually took charge of that part of it. We did three things with produce. We ate it. In fact, our green team had homemade salsa, and if we had been to the October meeting, I would have brought you some produce, but it's a little too late for that. The cucumbers were a big hit, and so was the watermelon. We sold some. So at parent night, we had our DECA team and our green team members selling tomatoes to the parents, and that was pretty successful. Green tomato sold pretty well, and not just the ripe ones sold. And we also gave some away. We, a couple weeks ago, gave 23 pounds of tomatoes to Oakland Hand Food Pantry, which is located right on Woodward. There is a food crisis in our community, so one of our goals next year is to actually donate more of our food and more of our produce. Just a couple more pictures. This is my second hour, having a good time with the chili peppers. That was exciting. Here's some of our produce, happily holding our tiny little watermelon. Some of the watermelon got larger, but that's a watermelon and tomato almost the same size. Stage one of the produce right before the harvest, or before the frost, we had to pick everything so it didn't freeze. Big sunflowers. And a little multicultural exchange. We have students saying, "This is how we carry our food where we're from," and carrying it into the building that way. Students were really excited about how much we produced and what was, started off as just, you know, a pile of meat, and came out to something that some students didn't know corn grew on plants. I wouldn't say that was most of the students, but I had one student who said, "I learned that corn grows on plants." And we had some students taste new things. "I've never tasted a tomato." Now, we think everybody tastes a tomato, but we did open up some new experiences for some of our students. And some, oh, yeah, my grandma does this all the time, this is what it does. So there's a lot of community building as well. The green team put the gardens fed in October, and then they celebrated with the tomato cake.
Tomato cake?
Yeah, well, you've heard of green, have you had green tomato pie? So, it's kind of like, oh, maybe that's what I should have done and frozen the pie and brought it to you. Next year, next year. Pretty good stuff, actually. They're like, "This is actually good." Yeah, I wouldn't bring you something that wasn't good. Plans next year, we hope to donate more of our harvests and maybe even serve some in the lunchroom because the first day of school, I happen to know personally that our food service delivers approximately the same number of pounds of cucumbers that we harvested in September. So that might be something that takes somebody from a higher level than mine, but it'd be a higher K grade, but it is certainly something that needs there. Just so that you know, there are other gardens and things out there. Michelle Obama's really into getting kids outside and the healthy eating movement, Michigan No Child Left Inside, and also some service learning, so if anybody's interested, I'm going to step aside if any kids want to say anything. It'll take all the time, so, or if they don't, they'll shine.
I think this was an outstanding experience for our students and our staff to see, taking a part of the building that was basically ignored and left alone, and it became alive with the plants, became alive with a lot of students being there. We had large rock formations moved in so it could be an area for sitting, and it became a highlight of the school year as well because throughout the summer, people could come and visit without actually coming into the building, and the way the art team came together and was putting that together on the walls, you could see the different murals that were placed there. And this all came in addition to, and it came in to welcome and bring in the greenhouse, which we had renovated very recently, as you remember, last year. So all this working together works very well also with our national academic program where our students are actually going to use some of this data for their extended essay projects. So all this is working together with our academics, our arts programs, and just a very big part of the social life that's lived. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good job. I had an opportunity to get tomatoes that night, they went. They're excellent. Oh, it's delicious, too. I want to try the cake first.
It's kind of a spicy thing when you take, like, if you've had an apple, like, an apple muffin?
Yeah.
A little bit like that.
Okay. So next year, I'll put you down for October muffin.
All right.
All right. At this time, we'd like to recognize the Southfield Public Schools Board of Education. At the recent Michigan Association of School Boards Conference last week, they were recognized for being an honor board, they were recognized for having a standard of excellence and 100% participation at the Fall Conference. So we honor you this evening. I also want to ask President, if you can, if you could just share a few words on what being an honor board is all about.
Being an honor board is a recognition of the effort that is put in by board members to gain certification by the Michigan Association of School Boards. Each one of us has attained Level One certification, so that's a set of classes that we have to take in order to improve our performance as school board members. So this is an ongoing process, and all of this works together. I mean, you see that the recognition that the superintendent has received is just, it's furtherance of, you know, what we commit to as a team. We're a team of eight right here that seek to, every day, go out and improve the delivery of educational services to students of Southfield, and that commitment is shared by each and every one of us. So it's some extra time and effort that's put in in order to achieve that, and it's really an honor to serve, you know, such dedicated public servants who see the need to learn more about what your role is as a school board member. And being an honor board means that not only have we gotten the Level One certification, but we've gone beyond that in terms of different levels of certification. So we're seeking to be the best school board that we can be in order that we can represent and serve this community the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Considering with my report is Dr. Trump, Budget Fin.
I just want to say, first off, congratulations again to Dr. Wanda Cook-Robinson, and I want to say, since I've been here, I've spent multiple years in school finance, and she has been wonderful to work for. She's truly a leader that makes you want to follow. So it's been great, so congratulations. I'd also, at this time, like to have Diane Wells and Nate Cora from the auditing firm of Plant Ranch, and let me give us our audit report.
First of all, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to do this tonight because the last step in the audit process is to give our report back to the board that hired us. We have four items that were in your board packet. One is the general purpose financial statement, the federal single audit, our annual letter to the board, and then a presentation, which is up here, of some of the key financial information for the year. I'm not going to go over all the details in all those documents, or we could be here for several weeks, but I just intended to give some of the key items tonight. First of all, a few comments on the audit process. So we spent over 500 hours testing controls, testing balances, reviewing supporting documentation, confirming outside parties, discussions with district personnel, and testing for compliance with certain laws and regulations. Virtually all of our work is done onsite at the district offices, and really starts prior to the end of your fiscal year, which is new year yet. In order for us to issue an opinion, we have some very strict standards and policies that we must adhere to. In fact, Plant Ranch participates in an extensive peer review process that is disclosed to the public as a matter of public record. So the objective on the financial statement audit is for the independent auditors to issue our opinion on the amount and the disclosures in the financial statement. Overall, we found the books and records to be in very good shape. I'm happy to report that based on all our tests and procedures, we have rendered an unqualified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statement. This is the highest level of assurance that we, as auditors, can provide on set of financial statements. In addition, these financial statements are submitted for evaluation by the Association of Business School Officials. For over 20 years, and that probably has the exact number, Southfield Public Schools has been awarded their certificate of excellence in financial reporting by this association. In order for you to achieve the award, your report must meet an even stricter, extensive level of standards. And this is a significant achievement, and we commend the district for its efforts in reporting accurately and meaningful financial information. And though Southfield is the longest standing recipient of this award in this industry.
Oh, wow.
In addition to the main audit report, there's two other documents. There's, as I mentioned, a document on the federal programs and their compliance with laws and regulations, and also our annual letter to the board, which contains some additional information, just an update on set of school finance. And I encourage you to read through those about when you have time. There's not any significant items in there that I feel I need to bring to your attention today. Before we move on to some key numbers on this year's presentation, I want to give you just a matter of perspective, and this was not planned, but I look back to the district in 2004. And 2004, the district's general fund revenue was high. And in 2004, the district's general fund revenue was $100 million. Last year, it was $114 million, so a decline of over $30 million in roughly eight years or 20%. And this includes a decline in state revenue of probably 24%. So not only did revenue decline, some of your costs were escalating at a rate much faster than the rate of inflation, like healthcare premiums and insurance costs. In fact, retirement rates in 2004 was less than 13%, and next year, it's over 25%. The schools are essentially on a fixed budget, and this decline in revenue requires you, has required you to make some very difficult decisions. Prior years, I urged you to plan and react accordingly, and I believe you have done that, and I commend you for that. I'd like to think that the rough road in the financial area is behind us, but I still caution you that there will be continued tough decisions to make. Now, as a point of reference, I found it interesting that while revenue decreased 20% and the instruction expenditures or direct classroom expenditures only decreased 13% over an eight-year period. So that tells me that you've been able to minimize the effects on the cuts on the direct classroom expenditures. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to Nate, who's gonna talk about some key items in First slide was just the certificate that you received on last year's financial statement, which I know will be submitted by management.
So the first slide I want to talk about shows the balance sheet for the various funds of the district as of June 30, 2012. Our main operating fund of the district is the general fund, and that'll be the focus of this presentation. Assets totaled $33.7 million. Included in that total was $27.5 million of cash and investments, as well as $4.5 million of estate receivable. Liabilities totaled $11.2 million. Included in that total was $2.8 million of accounts payable, as well as $5.7 million of crew payroll and related liabilities of earns prior to June 30th and not paid till after. Assets minus liabilities gives you fund equity, which is then broken into a few different categories. Non-spendable of $58,625, that includes inventory and prepaid costs. The accumulated severance includes sick and vacation pay earned and not paid, that totaled Anticipated tax appeals was $5 million, and this is our best estimate, estimate for future tax tribunal cases. Future capital improvements was $317,000, and that relates to two ongoing projects at year-end. The biggest item, though, is the budgeted use of fund balance in the subsequent year. We have $12.7 million. That relates to the June 2013 operating budget, which is showing excess of expenditures over revenue of this $12.7 million. Unassigned is essentially everything that hasn't met a category above, and that was $3.5 million at the year-end, for a total fund equity of $22.5 million. Next slide shows the combined statement of revenue, the alterance changes in fund balance at the year-end of June 30, 2012. Revenue totaled $93.2 million. Expenditures were approximately $89 million for an excess of revenue over expenditures of $4.2 million. Other financing sources were approximately $20,000 for a net change in fund balance of $4.2 million. When added to the beginning fund balance of $18.2 million, you arrive at the ending fund balance of $22.5 million. Next slide shows where the money came from this year, and this shows both the general fund and the funded project fund together. The total revenue combined for the two funds was $102.3 million. Included in that total was 17% of federal sources, or $70 million. State categorical and local totaled $7 million, or 7%. But the biggest portion this year and every year is going to be your state foundation allowance, with 76% or $78 million. That's based on a basic formula of your blended pupil count times your per pupil allowance. And because it's based on that simple formula, it really goes to show that you have very little control over your biggest revenue source every year. Next slide shows the ventures, which are basically where the money went. Total ventures were $98.6 million. For schools being a service industry, no more costs, it appears to be pupil costs, as evidenced by the 75% being spent on salary, sorry, salaries and benefits, to the tune of about $73 million. Other items to note would be purchase services at $13.2 million, or 13%. Supplies another at $7.5 million, or 8%. And housing transfers another at 4% or $4.4 million. This next slide shows a little bit of analysis in regards to fund balance, because a common question we get is, "How much fund balance is enough?" And there's never needed the answer to that question. A common way to compare fund balance is to view it as a percentage of expenditures each year. So if you take the current year fund balance of $22.5 million, divided by the current operating expenditures of $89 million, you arrive at 25.3%. The last published state average as of June 30, 2011 was 11.1%. So we are higher than that as of June 30, 2012. But I think it's a testament to making some of the hard decisions you've made over the years. As you can see also, in 2013, we're projecting a large deficit of $12 million, so that 25.3% becomes 10.2% in one year. And then again, we'd be below the state average. Another way to view fund balance is to view it as the number of days that you could survive without future funding. As of June 30, 2012, based on a 180-day school year, you'd have enough money to last 45 days of school. Now, again, if 2013 happens, as we project, that 45 days goes down to 18 days very quickly. My last slide shows a common trend of Michigan, a problem face that many schools are facing, and that's declining enrollment. From 2008 through 2012, Southfield schools have lost over 1,500 students. Now, to quantify that impact, that's potentially $16.7 million of lost revenue if we had had the same number of students in 2008 this year. Again, from the revenue slide, you know, your revenue, your biggest source of revenue each year is just based on that, that formula. So as your students are decreasing, that's having a very big impact on revenue each year. And with costs that are continuing, continuing, continuing to go up, such as healthcare and retirement, the school district each year is having to do more with less.
Any questions for President Moore?
I would like to finally, sort of, my take over Mr. Moran's. Well, we actually had a chance to speak directly with Plant Moran on a couple of different occasions. We understand where we are as it relates to funding. We certainly want to, as a board, I would personally like to be in Washington right after inauguration to work all of us newly elected officials to ring the bell. I mean, we've been in financial crisis since I've been on board, and I know that you all have been struggling with finances as well. And I know Mr. Obama has pledged that he was gonna fund education and training. It was one of his campaign cries. I've heard it, now, like the rest of the community heard it. And I certainly plan to be in Washington in January to extend my hand of congratulations, but also ask for some additional funding for, for education in general, but more specifically to fund us here in Southfield as well. So, thank Moran, thanks for all that you do. I know it was a rather interesting year for us, and thank you for your opinion. If you could just, you know, explain to the community what a clean audit, you know, actually entail. I mean, that's reporting back, you know, how, as fiduciaries, as, you know, trustees of the public, you know, funds, you know, in terms of how this board handles, you know, their funds, their affairs as opposed to maybe some surrounding districts or some of the others.
Yeah, and, you know, like I said, we spent over 500 hours testing all your, your balances, testing what, what your finance office prepares. You know, in some cases, to get to a clean opinion, we have to have a bunch of adjustments that we recommend in order to come to that. In this case, we did not. So the books were in order when we got here. Reconciliation was on time, and so to get to that, to that clean opinion, you know, we had a bunch of adjustments that we suggested, or else we'd be in a financial situation. The adjustments were, before we got here, and, and it's clean.
Is there any way to interact with her, probably right before you enter?
Yes.
So I guess, I was not able to really see. So the red, the red bar is the statewide average excluding Detroit outright, so 2012 and 2013, does this indicate that we're doing better than the...
Right, we don't, we don't know yet. Actually, all the, all the audit reports are due to the state on Thursday, and then that number will be as lengthy related.
Okay.
So we just don't have that information yet. I suspect, from what I see at other districts, because we do 100 or 100 districts, that statewide average, I suspect is going to go down from where it was a year ago.
Could you go back to the pie chart one more time so that we can see?
The pie chart?
Where, uh, where the revenue sources are coming from.
So, you know, 76% of it is your state foundation allowance, which is strictly your number of students times the state foundation allowance. Then you've got some categorical and local revenue, and then your federal revenue, and the same to others. Your federal revenue is about $7 million.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Trump and Sparker for all they do and the cooperation we get when we perform the audit.
I would like to congratulate you too, for the clean audit.
I just had to mention, the morning I was there, I was one of the mentors, and it went into my head, um, at, at the DTRAC. And at the end, we, actually, today's thing was about filling out a job application, so we gave them all the job applications, so we're in the sample. We asked them, too, we wanted to go on a field trip, and where do they want to go? And a lot of them wondered, and they were just, they wanted to see our surgeries, that, you know, someone wants to, we'd be amazed. Nobody wanted to see our personal health.
I have some work to do over there.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
What I wanted to do was give you a little background and reminder of the journey that we've been on to get where we're at. I came into the district in 2006, 2007, and that was back when the auditor was, we're talking about, when we had $130,000, you know, for revenue coming in. And since then, it's been a steady decline, and it's not my fault, I just wanted you to know. So, but it has been a very rough road. So when we did our five-year projection, because we know we can't look one year out, with the economy the way it is right now, we have to look out five years in the future. It's about as far as we can get any kind of good numbers, which, you know, you're still your sort of 5,000-foot look, but we do have some indicators to see where you're gonna be. When I came in and we did our first five-year projection, we predicted that we would be $100, $130 million in deficit by this year. So, you know.
Long wind.
There we go. Okay. So, you know, when you come in and you look at your first budget, you do your five-year projection, and you say $100 to $130 million in deficit, what on earth do we do with this? You know, we were talking about, you know, can I raise the mill, not knowing that the, the economy here, things that were going on, I was new to the area. And, you know, do we just go on and hope for the best, hope the state's gonna turn around, give us some more money, hope the economy's gonna pick up? I like the last one, scream and run, that's where I was headed. But that's not what happened. We got together, and, you know, you've heard tonight, Dr. Cook Robinson, the superintendent of the state superintendent of the year, we have had some awesome leadership. We have the best board, I think, in the state, the best superintendent. Our team pulled together, but it's not just the administration team. The teachers, the secretaries, the affiliates, everybody pulled together. We knew where we had to get to, we knew what we had to do, and then everybody got on board, and we did it together. So some of the things, I know you've heard me talk about before, but I just wanted to highlight again, things that we've done. We privatized non-instructional services, we've had numerous staff reductions, pay and benefit concessions from every group. We have health insurance caps, we are all paying 20% of our health insurance premiums, and if you've been around schools, you know that that's unheard of in the school sector. It was just, wasn't something that we did. We made changes to transportation. Even after we privatized, we went back and looked at it again, and then we went to Main Road Pickup to pick up some more savings. We've decreased our legal expenses by hundreds of thousands by bringing that in-house. We've decreased capital outlay expenses. That piece we're gonna talk about a little bit more going on here, but that's something we had to do to get to where we're at today. We've created operational efficiencies. Every office, every group has looked at things they can do in their own shop to see, how can we do things better to save money? We put all of our paychecks online, so we're not printing them, and just the savings for little things like that really add up. You're not paying for the ink, you're not paying the postage, you're not paying for the paper. So that's just one example, and that's been going on all over the district. Now, we've implemented some energy savings. We have sensors on our lights, so they go off when we're gone. We went through, we retrofitted some of our light bulbs for more energy efficiency. And again, there's a lot more things, but I'm just giving you a couple of highlights of things that we've done. We reduced our workman's comp, our employment, and we've also, and I'm blind, and I sure have my glasses on, so I'm trying to read my own. We worked with all of our contractors. We went back to every one of them, and we said, "You've got to help us. You're part of the community, you have contracts with us. We don't want to change our services, we need the services, but we really need you just to give us some concessions on your contract prices," and they did. So that's what I, when I say everybody as a team, I do mean everybody. We pulled together. If you see the graph up there, that shows that when we started out here, our revenues were up over $140 million, and because of all the different things that have happened, the student loss, the state coming through, cutting us, our property values falling off, you can see that line, it's just, it's almost straight down. That is the clip that everyone's been talking about. But if you see the red line, that's our expenditures. That's something that we had to do. Your expenditures are a flat line, they go straight across every year unless you make huge changes to them to bring them down. So we have been doing our very best to keep that in line so that we don't go in deficit. This is a graph on our pupil FTEs. When I came here again, we were over 10,000 pupils. And now, this year, we had projected that we were gonna be down to just a little over 7,000. So you can see what that graph looks like, they're just falling right up, and the auditors explained that the formula for our funding comes from, mostly from how many pupils. The money follows the pupils. So, but the good news is, is that we had projected a loss of about 485 students this year. Every year, we have a company go out and they look at all the economic indicators, the birth rates, everything, and they, they can give us an idea of how many pupils they think we're gonna have year to year. It's been dropping off by 400, 500 every year. This year, we only lost a little over 160. And what we did is, we, we decided that we have a great story here to tell in Southfield, and we were the only ones that do that. You know, our schools are awesome, and we sit in here at every board meeting, and we hear about all the great things that are going on, and people didn't know that, though. So, you know, the people were going to other school districts, and we wanted to know, what do we do? So we decided we need to get the word out. So we did a marketing campaign, and we started to tell people, "We have great teachers, we have rigorous curriculum, very high grade..." have rigorous curriculum, very high graduation rate, we're district accredited, not just school districts, or each school, but the whole district as a whole. We have dual enrollment, year-up, STEM, international baccalaureate, we've had GATE, Millennium Scholars, that's huge, the Michigan School Board Excellence in Education Award, the ASBO, that's the, um, Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, we've had that for actually twenty-nine years. So, um, we are the longest-standing recipient in the state. So, and the, I could go on and on, I, I had a list of talking points like this, but I didn't want to go on and on too much with it, but we just have a great story. So, what we're doing is we're getting that out, and it showed this year. Two hundred and eighty-five pupils stayed here that we had thought were out of our projections, and our projections have been pretty good every year. So, that shows that what we're doing is making a difference. This is another thing that I thought was really illustrative of what's been happening here. Back in two thousand eight, we had thirteen hundred employees. Now, some of that, the first big drop-off there is when we privatized, so that's going to be just the privatization itself. But if you look right after that, nine hundred and twenty-three in two thousand ten, from there forward, that's just been up tightening our belts. Everybody here is doing more with less. Everyone has learned to work more efficiently, you know, it, everybody has just kicked in. And what you don't see, Steve, when you come in, is you don't see a lot of people complaining or, you know, not wanting to do their job. They're coming in, they're happy, they're doing two and three jobs, and they're getting things done. This is a big one, we've kept our promise to the community. If you see, the graph on the left shows property values, the tax on the right shows the tax levy. We're a whole harmless district, so what that means is that a lot of our revenue comes from property, um, personal, or local property taxes, let me be honest with you. So, if you see where the bar goes up on the property values, that means that the levy that we were levying, which back in two thousand four was nineteen point six three mils, which was rather high, as the property values went up, that started generating more and more money. So, we started lowering the property tax levy on residents so that you would get a little relief. Now, you see the big dip on the right, where it went down to fourteen, that was because the property values went so far up before two thousand ten that we had actually generated more than our per pupil. You can only, um, generate as much as your pupil allowance from the state times your number of pupils. We had more than that, so we dropped it down as kind of a way to rebate the residents, give you back your money. But then when we brought it back up, even though the property values, you notice from there, it's just straight down, it wasn't coming back up, we didn't go back up to the nineteen. We only went up to sixteen point nine eight, and we've held it there straight all the way through. We're actually, we have a voter allowed millage of seventeen point six three four five, and the board and administration may have promised to the community that we would not raise it. So, we have another three quarters of a mil that we could be levying, but we have not. We've decided to live within our means, tighten our belts, and we have done that. Oh, the other thing is, is because we're whole harmless, we've been losing approximately five million a year because our property values don't generate enough for us to get our per pupil, which comes out to about seven hundred dollars per pupil that we are not bringing in. So, that's just another piece of the puzzle that we have been fighting against, but even with all that, we're a good stuff. Oh, if they keep putting me off, we're done, you know. Okay, so, I just wanted, just wanted to show you, this is where we're at today, this is what you just saw with the auditors, this is our fund balance. We're at twenty-two million. The thing I want to get across is that that twenty-two million is not twenty-two million in cash that we can spend, that twenty-two million is reserved. Actually, it's not enough to get us out the next two years of budgeted deficits, but it's still, it's a great place. Remember, when I started to start, I said we were supposed to be a hundred and thirty million in deficits, and we're not. We're sitting at twenty-two million. That's going to take us into the future, we're going to keep doing what we do, and I do believe at this point that we will stay solvent. I haven't always thought that we could stay out of deficit, but I do believe that we can. Um, the projected fund, the deficit, operating deficit for next year is twelve million, that's part of what we've reserved from the fund balance, and then the year after that, it looks like probably fourteen million. That could change depending on if we keep more pupils, you know, if things keep going the way they're supposed to, then, you know, things will change, that could get a little bit better. But still, we only have three million unassigned, and I said that I would get back to the capital projects because that's the big story here. Part of what we've done to stay out of deficit is we stopped all of our infrastructure spending and our technology spending, because those are two huge areas in the school district that really eat up a lot of your money. We didn't have the money. We were just trying to stay above water and keep it away from the kids, so that the curriculum and all the great things that they're doing there could keep going. So, we have made all of our cuts away from that area, but it's, you know, you can only do that for so long. What I tried to show here is that we have twenty buildings in this district, that we have a little over two million square foot of property. So, if you think about that in relation to your own home, and just the upkeep that it takes on your home, think about two million square foot. Roof, parking lots, boilers, HVAC systems, athletic fields, I put some of the estimated costs. Those things are failing here and there, and what we've done right now is that we're patching as we go, but we are going to get a facilities assessment, and we're going to have to start looking into the future, so we have to start making sure that we keep these buildings in the, you know, in the manner that they are now so that our children have a good place to go to, it's not just about the money, and they also have to have a good environment. Um, technology's another area we kind of haven't put any money into lately. I asked our IT department for just our quick inventory. We have over five thousand computers, they're about a thousand dollars a piece, we have over a hundred and fifty smart boards, and they cost about twelve hundred dollars, and we have five hundred iPads. If you add that up, right there, just those three things, and we have many, many other things, that's five million dollars in technology right there. A normal replacement is three to five years. We haven't done that, we're not on a replacement schedule, we're replacing when they die right now. So, these are just things I just want you to keep in your mind, because going forward, we have to be cautious. So, you know, what I did on this left slide, you can just see, I just love to put pictures up here too. You get the little kids out there, it makes them remember why we're doing this, but it's about balance, that's how it scales in the middle. So, we're going to go forward, we're going to try and balance this. We want to do the best we can for the kids, put as much money in curriculum in the kids. You heard from the auditors that we have actually increased our percentage of costs on curriculum. So, that's a great thing. But we have to remember that that money that's showing in fund balance is not really money that we have to just spend, and as the CFO, I always try to make sure that everybody's really cautious, because we do need that money going forward to make sure that our district stays solvent and that we keep the infrastructure up too. So, does anybody have any questions? One more thing, I almost forgot. Shari, can you stand up real quick? And I don't think Joanne can. Shari does the lion's share of the work on the audit, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw her and.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, and terrific presentation.
Well, I can share it up.
Well, I do. Would like to thank you, Dr. Monica Robinson, for being my leader, and I want to thank Ms. Trump for such a comprehensive report this evening. Uh, you shed light on, um, many concerns that we have in instruction and how we have to move forward. And I also would like to thank South Hill Lane for, for wonderful presentation on authentic teaching and learning. And with that, this evening, I'm going to bring closure to my report and turn it over to Mr. Turner.
Happy to report, good evening, that our superintendent is the superintendent of the state. I, I told you.
You did.
Congratulations again to the board as well for your accomplishments. I want to say congratulations to Trustee Smith and Trustee Lewis on their reelections as well. And, uh, so our board stays intact, yeah, that's one thing for us in administration, because we appreciate you all. Um, I have no report this evening. Oh, Ms. Trump wants to make mention, I was trying to tell you earlier, that we have, uh, we like to link to the board when we have new hires that you'll see contained in the personnel report, we like to make mention when they make time to see the board in action for the first time, so we do have one, and Ms. Trump, you can introduce it.
We have tonight Angela Rudolph. She came to us, um, with many years of accounting experience, she's going to be our internal auditor grants person downstairs. So, Angela, do you want to just take a minute and stay over?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Angela Rudolph. I have over twenty years in accounting, ten years specifically in public school accounting. Personally, I graduated in Detroit from Madison High School, and ended my career with the Massachusetts Great Wall. I have two nieces and one nephew who live in South Hill, Level Ten South Hill School. As a matter of fact, my niece is a freshman at your new, um, university academy, so I'm really excited for her, she loves it, she made cheerleading team. So, I'm happy to tell her that I came aboard. You guys have so many exciting things going on here, and I would just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be a part of it. Welcome. Thank you.
That concludes my report, the remainder of my concern is to send it to the senior action items. Thank you.
All right. Now, we, uh, we have a report from Head Start Program from Trustee B. O. Anderson.
Melissa Beverly Hannan. This is the Bussie Center for Early Childhood Education, Dan Stoll Director, Policy Council Report. So, uh, this is the third month in a row that I've been making this presentation, and I thought maybe the community would be happy to know what a policy councilor that's at Bussie or in a Head Start program, so I just highlighted a few things to include. The, uh, policy council representatives have a very important role. They are, uh, working partnership with staff and board members to review, approve, or disapprove of the following, such as funding applications, procedures for sharing decision-making, procedures for program, program planning, philosophy in short and long-range goals, selection of delegates where applicable, the composition of the council, criteria for recruitment, selection and enrollment, personnel policy provisions, and more. And then they directly perform duties such as serving as a link to the school board, the community and parent committees. They also communicate with parent committees regarding rights and responsibilities as well as opportunities, assist parents, parent committees in planning activities for, for the parents utilizing the agency funds, even recruiting and, recruiting volunteer services from parents and community organizations. Included in the director's report, report for Ms. Hill were the new officers that will be presiding for policy council for this school year. Hillary Little, Tamika Grayden, Kenya Harrison, Kendra Cummings, Kathy Davis Scales, and Ayana Young Carruthers. Enrollment is at a hundred and eighty-seven students at Bussie. In order to operate, as you've heard us mention many times, Head Start requires a hundred and ninety students for full enrollment. Three children will be starting this week bringing the, uh, current enrollment back to full status, and we are awaiting confirmation from pupil registration on that. There are also a hundred and twenty students still remaining on the waitlist. As it relates, and Bussie is also fully staffed. As it relates to the child adult care food program, there were two thousand one hundred and forty-six breakfasts served, two thousand seven hundred and eleven lunches, and one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four snacks. Bussie met the forty-five day compliance window for vision, hearing, and dental screenings. The extension to address deficiencies was approved by the region, and the extension granted, was granted through February of two thousand thirteen. The region, which is Region Five for, for our area, will be probably visiting a likely three to five days in February. The fire marshal also came and conducted his re-inspection, and all non-compliances have been corrected. Average daily attendance, which is another, one of the major criterias with Head Start, uh, the average, the ADA should be eighty-five percent, and Bussie's ADA for October was at eighty-two percent. Ms. Hill has, uh, formed a committee to address this issue, even considering incentives for parents and students and prizes at the end of the month. Also, letters will be sent to those families who have poor attendance because the attendance policy will be enforced. As a side note, Bussie's, Bussie hosted Curriculum Night on October seventeenth, and thirty-two families did attend. As it relates to the Head Start awareness, you might recall, October was Head Start Awareness Month, and it was a huge success. We want to thank Kroger, Uncle Joe's Chicken, Kidoba, Helenic Coney Island, and JWE Administration for displaying the paper dolls for the entire month of, of October, and it looks like we still have some up. Partnerships are also another important key area with Head Start, and, uh, the, um, PNC Bank has partnered with Bussie again this year. They have already donated hats, mittens, and gloves for Bussie children. Each child will also receive a code from PNC Bank, and also as a part of this year's partnership, PNC Bank employees will donate one hundred volunteer hours. After they have finished those one hundred hours, Bussie will receive a three thousand dollar grant from PNC Bank. Paragon Properties has partnered with Bussie this year, they have donated backpacks and school supplies, plans are underway for them to also adopt a family at Bussie, and Share Smile Dental will adopt five families for the holiday. So, a big thank you to all of those entities. Bussie Events, staff members are adopting ten families for Thanksgiving. Bring Dad to School Day is November fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. The Health Safety Advisory Committee meets on November nineteenth. There is an internal review team visit on November nineteenth, and Celebrity Readers will begin on November fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Very important date to write on your calendar, Thursday, November twenty-ninth, from five to seven PM, is Bussie's Hole List Health Fair. This is an opportunity to, um, give the parents a treat, because they're so often so worried about their young one that they don't get a chance to really take care of themselves. So, Ms. Hill and her staff are going to provide the fair where there will be childcare provided. Jimmy John's and Subway have donated trays of sandwiches. Sam's Club will be doing diabetes testing with fruit trays. There's Lumba Training, Friday gift certificates available, breast cancer awareness, theater passes, Coventry Care Nutritionist from WIC, Fitness Nineteen, free guest passes, Kidoba Mexican Meal Deal, personal trainers, specials and whatnot with Avon America, as well as Whole Foods giveaways. And the last piece of the puzzle for my report is that, uh, our grant award remains the same at one point three million dollars. Expenditures to date are at seventeen point nine five percent, balance remaining on hand is one million sixty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars, ninety-four cents. The budget requirements will be reviewed monthly to determine amendments with Head Start Administration, and last year's grant was one million to, one point two million dollars. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we move to unfinished business, and we'll turn it back over to the superintendent for a matter that was brought before the board previously.
Yes, I'm going to invite Dangerous Floyd to the podium, and if you remember last, uh, board meeting, Mr. and Mrs. Atlas, um, came to the board with concerns about an issue with his son, and we have been working on that issue, and, um, then Floyd will update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, myself and Mr. George Chastain, Director of Curriculum, have been working very closely with the Atlas family. We have been in contact with them, he requests additional information from them. At this point, we are waiting to, to receive information from them so that we can begin having some sort of, uh, conversation with them surrounding the things that they brought to your attention at the last board meeting, and until then, that's all information that we have to report, and if more information comes to us, we surely update you as we get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now we move to the action items. Uh, it's time to take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
Support.
We move to support, and if there are any questions regarding, uh, hearing none, um, secretary, who's on the, on the, who's on the.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Williams.
Yes.
My friend, they cast.
Yes.
Friend, they can.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we'll take a motion to open and approve report fifty-one fifteen, resolution in support of open enrollment.
So, we support.
We've been supporting.
Yes. Uh, can I, Secretary, give us a little background? I want some of them.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. Uh, with regards to the resolution supporting Oklahoma, as you know, in the beginning of the school year, uh, we brought for a recommendation as well to continue in Section 105, other 105, which is, uh, our contiguous, um, excuse me, which is the other districts that are inside of Oakland County but are not contiguous with 105 C. This is a continuation, limited perspective again for kindergarten to seventh grade, with, uh, just over a hundred seats, or a hundred is a good capture, obviously, the enrollment period is as you see it, for those two weeks, we would again take application from individuals, uh, who are in the Oakland County districts and which who, uh, join Southwood Park Schools, and as we have seats available. Obviously, the enrollment period is as you see it for those two weeks, we would again take application from individuals who are in the Oakland County districts in which to join Southwood Public Schools and as we have seats available, we will invite them to our district. Depending on your pool, of course.
Are there any questions?
Just one. Is it reciprocal? Wondered.
That would be upon that school district too. Very similar to what you see, we would do, they would have to do as well.
Any further questions? The secretary, please call for the vote.
Bussie Robinson.
Yes.
Bussie Lewis.
Yes.
Bussie Paul.
Yes.
Myself.
No.
Bussie Williams.
My friend, Ms. Chastain.
Yes.
My friend, Ms. Cannon.
Yes.
We'll take a motion to open and approve report 5116, the audit report.
We open report 5116.
We've already gone through the entire audit report and so at this point, this is as accepting the report as it's been given to us. Can you please call for the vote?
Bussie Williams.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bussie Robinson, yes. Bussie Paul.
Yes.
Bussie Lewis.
Yes.
My friend, Ms. Chastain.
Yes.
My friend, Ms. Cannon.
Yes.
Thank you. It's time to take a motion to open and approve report 5117, resolution to oppose education funding cuts.
So we support.
We support. And my friend.
Okay, for action, resolution to oppose education funding cuts. Whereas, a rural class public education is essential for the future success of our nation and today's schoolchildren and whereas, the Budget Control Act of 2017 includes a provision to impose $1.2 trillion in across-the-board budget cuts to almost all federal programs, including education, that would become effective January through 2013. And whereas, these across-the-board budget cuts would impact school districts during the 2013-14 school year with the exception of the Impact Aid Program with which a reduction would become effective this school year. And whereas, these across-the-board budget cuts, also known as sequestration, would impact education by a reduction in funds of 8.2 percent or more and could result in larger class sizes, fewer course offerings, possible four-day school weeks, loss of extracurricular activities, and teacher and staff layoffs. And whereas, sequestration would impact almost every public school system in the nation and the millions of students educated through cruel programs such as Title I Grants for disadvantaged students, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, English Language Acquisition, Career and Technical Education, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and more. And whereas, Southfield Public Schools, as well as all other public schools, would be impacted nationwide by an estimated $2.7 billion loss from just three programs alone, Title I Grants, IDEA, Special Education State Grants, and Head Start that serve a combined 30.7 million children. And whereas, federal funding for K-12 programs was already reduced by more than $835 million in fiscal year 2011 and state and local funding for education continues to be impacted by budget cuts and lower local property tax revenues. And whereas, states and local governments have very limited capacity to absorb further budget cuts from sequestration, Southfield Public Schools has already implemented cuts commensurate to state and local budget conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Southfield Public School District urges Congress and the administration to amend the Budget Control Act to mitigate the drastic cuts to education that would affect our students and community and to protect education as an investment critical to economic stability and American competitiveness. Resolve this 13th day of November, 2012.
As we all know, as the election has been decided, we now have to deal with the looming budget cuts, commonly referred to as the sequestration and we hear a lot about our economy going over the cliff. So this is our board's resolution to let our federal legislators know that we are not in favor of any proposed cuts to education, that if education is to be a priority in our community, in our country, then they're going to have to step up and do what's necessary to support that. And with that, the secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Bussie Lewis.
Oh, yes.
Bussie Robinson.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bussie Williams.
Yes.
Bussie Lewis.
Yes.
My friend, Ms. Chastain.
Yes.
My friend, Ms. Cannon.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We now get to information items, report 5118 of the purchasing reports and these are items that are purchased by the district and do not meet the threshold that requires board action. On there is Boyd Griffin and Associates out of Danai, Maryland and what is the staff development of the software or the actual program?
Actual professional development, two teachers.
Okay. And the total amount for that was $17,500. Ms. Robinson, can you read these gifts to the board?
This is not the Hunsford, but the senior following the nation. James Club Award awarded 20 leading middle school teachers with $50 reward cards encouraging classroom supply. As part of the teachers' reward program, the local educators were honored during an award ceremony in the school gymnasium. Mr. James W. Robinson donated a complete drum set to University High School Academy. The drums will be utilized to support the music program at the school. PNC Bank donated a little glove act and coat to 150 students at the Bussie Center. Every student received an item.
Thank you. And we also want to thank all of the kind donations to our district as well. We now come to the public participation part of our meeting. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments or may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for a follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. And anybody that wishes to speak, if you're, please pull out a blue card. We have Geraldine Amato. Please step to the microphone and stationing an address for the board.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Amato and I'm living here in Southfield since June. My address is in your records. I don't see why I have to announce it at the microphone. I'm staying with people at a certain address. I don't know if they like to announce it at the microphone or not. I know I'm not going to have time to really expound on what I'd like to call to your attention, but I have learned since I've been out of school that we are being deceived systematically. The fiscal restraints that we are facing, and you notice that the establishment have coined the phrase fiscal cliff this year, has all been strategized from day one when they allowed the private banks of cartel to take control of the wealth of this nation. Incrementally, the wealth has come under the control of privateers. They're outlaws and they own the banks of cartel. The main one we deal with here is the Federal Reserve. There's also the International Monetary Fund and the World Bank that are stationed headquartered in Washington, DC. We are being reduced to being mercenaries, beggars, victims, subjects of a malavolent, overlord institution. If you look at the Declaration of Independence, which I believe we need to revise to spare of the American Revolution, there's a phrase in there that states, "Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury." That litany of grievances or fears about education funding cuts is just one example of what we're facing. The fiscal cliff that's being mentioned, they plan to push us over that cliff in due time if we let them. If there is not an uprising in this nation to stop these criminals that control the government of this nation, they will do us in. If we are no longer willing to be mercenaries because we're being temporarily rewarded with material benefits, if we're not willing to resist them, we'll inherit disaster or the economic disaster. Those of us who are not useful displays will be genocided. The people that control the Pentagon is not the lawful command of our military establishment that will not be mentioned on Veterans Day. Those veterans who have grievances against the establishment are not allowed to speak publicly. That's just one example. If you listen to all the propaganda yesterday and this weekend about veterans, they let the cheerful ones at the microphone but not those who have serious grievances and many of whom are not being listened to and are committing suicide. These are travesties of justice. These are atrocities we have perpetrated against our own people and we are blithely sitting back and letting the master form our thoughts and our concepts of reality. I challenge people, distinct the council, the Holy Spirit, and the sovereign God Almighty, look at what's really going on and decide, is it suitable to continue to go along with the program? Our wealth in this nation that we are being bribed with is built on the extravagance and waste and it's built on the backs of all the subjective peoples around the world who are living from hand to mouth existence. That's where we will be if we do not resist what's going on.
Time.
Well, yeah, the three minutes I get here is not enough to expand on this. I come at my own time because I'm trying to alert enough people that want to be alerted. It's sad that people are happy with the status quo because they're comfortable.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Yes, I know. Isn't it sad?
Yeah, the man has spoken.
Good, yes. You're very respectful.
You know what, ma'am? You come in here, you disrespect our process with this nonsense every month.
Your process is more important than the truth, ma'am.
Whatever, ma'am.
Yes.
Later. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I'm getting out of some of these bars trying to pour you.
I do.
Thank you, but I didn't ask.
It's not completely filled out, but.
That's all right. Just a second.
Victoria McLeod. Name and address for the record.
Victoria McLeod, my name. My son attends the university. So it's been a great experience thus far. Ms. Trump mentioned that early on that you guys, that you did some marketing, but I apologize that I did not raise my hand sooner to ask what that involved because I specialize in marketing and advertising. So my overall goal is to assist the school that my son attends, but more importantly, in addition to that, try to, you know, help in any other areas that I can, but that's okay.
If you could, please speak with Ms. Jacqueline Robinson and she does all, yeah, she does all the marketing for the district.
I'm glad you think.
You can also share our marketing report from last year.
Oh, beautiful.
Very well, thank you.
We now come to board matters and this is our opportunity to share with the community any issues that the board might refer.
But last week, five members of the board attended the Michigan Association of School Board meeting where we actually studied some of the problems that are presented to school districts in Michigan and we got to meet with 600 school board members and superintendents from across the state. It was a wonderful experience and I did learn a great deal. I want to tell you that wherever I go, they say, "What district are you from?" And I say, "Southfield," and the response is invariably, "Oh, well, Southfield," when I'm tooting our horns because they've already, they're already starting to hear about us across the state, at least the other school districts have. And it's a uniform response and it's very heartwarming and I give most of that credit for that. I mean, the board gets the credit for choosing an outstanding superintendent, but it is the leadership of our superintendent that has made us so outstanding in this state. I want to give the credit where it is. Just leadership. Academic, I mean, we are recognized nationally for our professional development. We are recognized statewide for our superintendent and for our alternative school, among other things. We are a model that people come to study and the superintendent is in demand as a supervisor nationally, everywhere. So I want you to be aware of that and spread the word. This is a good school district and the only disappointment I have is that I could not have attended such a school district when I went to school. Now, today, I spent a good part of the day in Lansing because the House of Representatives Education Committee was meeting to discuss Bill 6004. And I haven't thoroughly studied it because I just heard about it, you know, like Sunday when I came home from downtown. And this bill would allow the education, let me see, the EAA, it's gone right out of my head.
Education, the Education Authority, to seize buildings that are not in use for
education. We in Southfield have multiple buildings, several of which are closed and in tip-top condition because we have, in spite of our financial problems, we maintain these buildings in the hopes that the students will come back. Our student population declined primarily because of economics. They left the state for the most part and as you see, they're starting to come back. We have an increase of 266 students this year and if they come back, we will need those buildings. Now, if the state takes it for an experimental school, and I have to call them that because there is no evidence that they're going to work, and we decide we need a school back, we can ask for it back and get it back with a two-year window. If we don't fill that building and use it within two years, we lose the building permanently. That's the way I read the law. And if I read it incorrectly, I would be willing to be corrected, but that's what I read. And I went to Lansing to testify about what this bill would do and other bills would do to our district and they were talking about the 5 percent of schools in Michigan that are underserving their students. They were not talking about Southfield and I wanted to talk to them about the 95 percent that are doing the job.
Right.
You know, because I talked to 600 people, not all of them, but many people this weekend who I'm very proud of what their districts are doing in Michigan. And we are being attacked because 5 percent are not doing well. Instead of helping, you know, all of us picking in to help these students, they are attacking us, taking away our funding, diluting the funding, you know? Southfield has half of all the Chinese schools in Oakland County. They are diluting our funds for these schools that don't work. And so I want you to be aware of it. I want you to, if you have questions, call. You can call Lansing if you want numbers. Call Rudy U. You know, Rudy is knowledgeable. Rudy's on our team. Call him up. Call him up and ask him, and ask him what you can do. So that's my message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it also my understanding that if they take these buildings, that your tax dollars will still go toward campus schools?
Absolutely.
You must maintain them.
Yeah, I have to maintain them.
No, they have to maintain them. I read that they have to maintain them. I thought we would have to maintain them.
Well, I read it again, then I'll check.
We're actually talking about.
I did read it the other.
We're talking about two sets of things. What you're talking about is with the EAA. The other is.
The education achievement authority, that's what I mean.
The other is how, is where you have the parents have the ability to take over the school. So you have a trigger in the school.
It's a trigger law. It's a different law.
That's different. And those are the schools that we have to maintain. The EAA has to take care of their own, their buildings if they do, but if the trigger law applies, then we have to maintain the building.
But it was my understanding that the EA could take the building at no cost, declare it eminent domain, and take it and not pay us for it? Under the bill, I saw today they could do that, but we could get them back provided we can fill a school, you know, for with education. That's not so easy.
And really, all this is shuffling around, you know, chairs on the Titanic. They're just moving one set of issues, you know, from one community to another community without really addressing the root cause. And let's say it's public education. I'll tell you what, if they want to know how it's done, come to Southfield and we'll show you how to get it done. And that's what I think.
Carol, is it also my understanding that our tax dollars are also going to support charter schools as well?
Yes.
It's the same money. It's the same pile of money.
I think parents don't realize that. You get the same foundation a lot of them. I think they should know that.
And when your child attends a charter school outside of the community, your dollars are leaving the community. But Vice President Katz said, here in Oakland County, we have, in Oakland County, there are like sixteen charter schools, eight of them are here in Southfield, okay? And the majority of the students that are attending these schools are not Southfield residents. But they still get our services. So our police, our fire, you know, we clean the streets and everything else, pick up the trash for, you know, for these, so, you know, that's a burden on local taxpayers not being accounted as well, as well as, you know, the dollars that leave in one community. It's a mess. It's a mess.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, did you have anything? Mr. Lewis?
I would just like to thank the city of Southfield, the privilege and Southfield Township for coming out and holding the pick to vote. The voice of the people was heard, and we would like to thank you for coming out to express your voice. Also would like to thank you for allowing me to serve you for another four years. And I want to point out that I'm not a public official, but I'm a servant. I'm a servant to everyone, whether he voted for me or not, and I thank you, and God bless you.
And I think, as we all know, that education is a passport to the future, but tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for it today. Father, education is not going anywhere in this world. This history is a direct reflection of its leaders who we've heard get out throughout this meeting tonight, the leaders. That includes not only Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, but the administrators, the staff, custodians, the counselors, everyone. Without them, the cabinet and this board, without them, as well as the community as well, parents, grandparents, and others. We appreciate the support that the community is showing us. We will never rest on our laurels, and as leaders, we will continue to educate ourselves and provide the best leadership that we can for this district. When I came on this board in two thousand nine, I asked President, what can we do to be number one in the state? Figured it out. We're one out of six hundred, maybe more, boards in this state. We're one in the top ten, top twelve in the state of Michigan. So I think that's going to take us other places. Yes, I want to be recognized, and I'll say it here personally, ma'am, I want to make sure that not only Dr. Cook Robinson is recognized nationally, but that this board and the community of Southfield is also recognized nationally.
I could not let this moment pass without congratulating Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson again. And I'm going to take us back to two thousand nine as well. And we all took a trip up to Lansing in President Buchanan's van. Never forget that day. It snowed up a storm. And I guess there was some concern about whether or not we would make it on time, but President Buchanan remembered a shortcut from his college days to Michigan State. You'd have to be there to understand that inside joke, but it was Vice President Katz, President Buchanan at the wheel, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson riding shotgun. I was in the backseat with Trustee Hall. This was significant because this was my first urban conference. I knew we were a good school district. I think we all knew that. We were probably in the afternoon session with Dr. Brian Perkins, if you remember. Dr. Perkins is a very sought-after, world-renowned professor at University of Columbia. And Dr. Perkins was speaking. This is my first trip with the group. He didn't know me from out. I think President Buchanan had an idea, but the rest of the crew were, "Who is this? Trustee Pooh." Well, to make a long story short, Dr. Perkins was talking to the group, and he was walking through the audience like he normally does at a conference. And for some reason, he stopped and asked me, "What do you think of your school district?"
What do you think of what?
"What do you think of your school district?" And I could see everyone praying. He got upset. I said, "Well, Southfield Public Schools is a good school district. It is a good district to be great. We're going from good to great. That's what we're doing." Three years later, it's been evident, and what we do is an honorable work, as Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is for probably superintendent of a region, but superintendent for the state. But I know Wanda well enough to know that, more importantly, she'll say, "It's congratulations to her cabinet. It's congratulations to her administrators. It's congratulations to the teachers, students, and parents that make this whole thing work." You all made this happen, but more importantly, you made it happen in an extremely challenging time. This has been the worst economy since the Great Depression. Now, it wasn't very during the Great Depression, but anything like this, I don't know how it survived.
It's pretty good.
I'm sorry, Trustee Katz. It was bad, absolutely. Also, I'd like to say that Wanda would probably also say, the many support organizations that helped us provide the services that we provide today, the wraparound service, support services like the bus drivers, the parent brother, the food service organization, the parent network. I'll say that again, the parent network. The volunteers, the security groups, the paternity sororities, all of the community-based organizations that help us do what we do, and has to provide a safe environment to educate our children. Now, I know you probably think I may have left some people out, and I probably have, but please charge that to my mind and that to my heart. We truly appreciate everything you do, and that's why you all make us one of the best school districts in this country. So thank you all. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and let's roll up our sleeves and get back to work after Thanksgiving. Thank you.
I'll just say one thing. I had a whole little, but I'm kidding. This past weekend, as I was mentioning before, we did attend the Michigan State Conference for School Boards and learned a lot of things. And the one thing that I just want to leave with the people listening here today, hopefully parents are listening, is this bullying thing is still very prevalent, and unfortunately, students are taking their lives, you know, just because it's just always in their face. Technology is the gift and the curse, I always say. And so I just encourage parents and adults, community interested bodies, you know, anytime you see a young person, encourage them, say something of encouragement to them because it may be the very only thing they've heard all day that says, "I can keep going," or "I can continue on forward." So let's not, you know, because I tell my friends all the time that even I was bullied, and I could take you to the side and tell you how that happened on another occasion, but I think a lot of us were probably bullied. They say that in the workplace, the boss is usually the bully. So there's an epidemic of bullying that probably was prevalent all along, but now that technology is available in just so many forms, we have to help our children to have coping skills and problem-solving skills other than taking their lives, which is not an option. So that's my message, just for my board matters, is to talk with our young people, encourage them, and keep an eye on them.
One more remark. In my previous remarks, I forgot to commend Wanda Cook Robinson for her achievements, and I would like to take time out to give kudos to her for the miraculous rewards, awards that she's given tonight. And I encourage you to honor her.
Thank you. I concur. I mean, I want to join in the chorus of congratulating you with the affirmation that those who have been sitting at the table there have made the right decision. And, you know, we kind of had a little bit of opposition, but, you know, it's kind of nice to kind of like, you know, I just think, oh, so I knew, I knew who you were then. But I also want to congratulate my two colleagues on their reelection to the board. That's a testimony to, you know, the good work that you do, but it's also a testimony to this board in that the community really does trust this board and that it reelected the incumbents to continue to serve. So I want to congratulate you both for that as well.
Are you good?
I want to say one more thing, yes. And one of the many, many genius qualities of our superintendent is our ability to collect good stuff and to inspire them to do good work. You heard tonight, twenty-nine years, this was even started before you were superintendent, but we continue to be tops in our audit every year, and we have outstanding staff sitting here. I mean, every one of them is excellent in his or her field. And our principal did such a fine job out there in the field, in the bullying field too. And the principal's teachers, look at the artwork, it's marvelous, right down to preschool to the bussie thing. It's just wonderful. It's the joy of coming to this school board, everyone. Thank you very much.
It's a lot of fun, man.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Last but not least, God. Our future meetings, November twentieth to twenty-seventh, we have student hearings. November twenty-sixth at five thirty, we have the boys' presentation. December eleventh, we have the next race, seven to four, and we'll definitely make a motion to adjourn from the meetings. For people who are willing to support it, and this meeting of the Southfield Public Schools is now in progress.